We'll call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, November 1st to order. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield. O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Eight present, one absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. The pledge of allegiance is to the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented? Councilmember Plowman.
Mr. Mayor, I would kindly ask if we move item number 14, a discussion regarding the auditorium gun range, from item 14 in between items number nine and 10.
Okay, we have the changes to the agenda as presented. Motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion been made in second at discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we have consent items. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, on tonight's consent agenda, we are for council's approval. City Council minutes of October 18th, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of October 25th, Park and Recreation Board minutes of October 20th, an appointment to Municipal Utilities Commission of Dave Baumgart, accounts payable report for October 14th through the 27th, a resolution for Block 25 minor subdivision application, a resolution AEHN LLC Suite Livin' minor subdivision application, a resolution for renewal of master joint powers agreement with the Minnesota Bureau of Criminal Apprehension and Minnesota Court Amendment Agreement, a resolution designation of new polling place, a resolution for certification of unpaid utility charges as a lien, resolution accepting project number 2001A, Ninth Street Southeast Reconstruction from Wilmer Avenue to Pleasant View Drive and authorized final payment, a resolution to accept project number 2003A, First Street Overlay, Minnesota Trunk Highway 23 to 19th Avenue and authorized final payment, application for exempt permit from the Wilmer Hockey Association, council's acceptance, the Human Rights Commission minutes of June 15th, the Convention and Visitors Bureau minutes of September 21st, and council's information, the Charter Commission minutes of October 18th.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item F and aye.
Okay, we'll pull items number F and aye. Anybody else want to pull anything? Councilmember Nelson.
I'd like to pull item K.
Item K. Anything else? With the exception of those three items, is there a motion to approve?
So, second.
Motion been made in seconded, made by Plowman, seconded by Fagerly, in case you didn't catch that. So, we are pulling items number F, aye, and K. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Item number F, councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe councilmember Nelson wants to abstain on this one.
Correct. Councilmember Nelson suggested that she would like to abstain from that motion, so if you'd like to move it forward at that time.
I'll make a motion to file.
The motion been made and seconded for the resolution on item number F. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Abstain.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
That resolution passes. Next, item number aye, the resolution to designate new polling place. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like Clerk Thompson to explain to the public where the new polling place will be. Since it's not at Redeemer Church, it'll...
Sure. The new polling place, Redeemer Church, notified us that we would be unable to use our facilities for the upcoming elections, so I did make contact with the First Covenant Church, which is at 801 Wilmer Avenue Southwest, and they have agreed to be the polling location for Ward 4, Precinct 3. And the voters will be getting notification from the Secretary of State's office of the new polling location.
So, that won't be in Ward 4. That's in Ward 2, but Ward 4 will be voting there from that precinct.
It is a polling place for Ward 4, Precinct 3.
Okay, but it's in Ward 3, isn't it? It's across from HODAP Field?
It is across from HODAP Field, yes.
Okay, I believe that's in Ward 3, but that's okay.
Yes, we can be in different wards.
All right, thank you.
And that could also change with the new redistricting that we'll be doing due to the census, so...
Thank you. Move to file.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded to file the new designation of the polling place. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Item number K, resolution to accept project number 2001A, Ninth Street Southeast Reconstruct from Wilmer Avenue, Pleasant Drive, Pleasant View Drive and authorized final payment. Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. I am seeking clarification on what the final payment is. I believe, and I'll just ask for that clarification, but there was a letter that was sent out to all of the residents along Ninth Street about what was going to happen with the grass and the issues that had been from last year. That, there were two distinct differences between the two blocks down to the 14th Avenue and then the rest. That did not happen, and so I am just seeking clarification with what did happen and if we're paying the final, this is it then, on the grass and the weeds and the dirt and the rocks.
Ms. Fagley, do we have any explanation?
Yeah, we're going to defer this to Gary and to Jared. Mr. Manzer and Jared Bogie, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Bogie.
Evening, Mayor, council. Yes, the final pay application is essentially releasing the remaining retainage for the improvement project. Prior to, prior to that, there was some reseating that was done along Ninth, and the specifications require that the turf be of uniform growth. Now, that's subject, obviously, to interpretation, unfortunately, but that's what the specifications say. So, if there's a specific area that needs to be addressed, I mean, I guess the option would be to delay the final payment. Doing so would delay that project into 2022, just because of the timing of the year right now. The other option would be to identify it as warranty work and proceed with the final payment. So, if there's definitely specific areas that we need to review further, we can certainly do that. But again, the item before you this evening is to release the retainage, which would ultimately start the project warranty period.
Mr. Manzer, have you observed that area? And is it staff's recommendation to release the final payment?
So, I've drove that area and looked at the seeding, and unless I'm missing a spot, I thought it, you know, there was a, there was a couple spots early on that weren't coming as well, and I know they did a little bit of reseeding. I can't exactly say, Daryl, our tech, was the one that was following up on that, but I can certainly follow up to it more, but I would, I guess my recommendation would be to close the project out, and we could call it as warranty work, and I could work with Dunick Brothers, Inc., and Beans are doing some other work for us, and just have them go down, and maybe I can meet with you, Audrey, to get exactly where those spots are, so we're talking about the same spot and just get it cleaned up.
Yes, so staff's recommendation remains to accept the project number 2001-A. Councilmember Nelson.
I'll go ahead and make the motion, as long as you're assuring that there will be warranty work that's able to be done. I can go ahead and make the motion, and I'll make a comment after, if there's a second.
Second.
Motion made in seconded. Councilmember Nelson.
I, I know each year we've had issues. I know there were issues on the 13th, the little streets over by the east side over there, too. I know that it was, it worked hard. I think we need to be careful that when we send out a letter and we say that we're going to do something specific, that was completely redo it, that didn't happen with that. The grass is growing. We had issues with rain, et cetera, but I think there was a lesson learned by all of us with the process and with that, and I just hope that we can apply it to future years with that, so...
I can't speak on behalf of the letter that was sent out on your street, but I can assure you that as long as I'm involved and as we move forward, that I'll make sure the best communication is made and make it right with everybody there. That's been one thing I've been striving for on some of the projects I'm working on, is to make sure that people understand that we're trying to do the best for them, and we'll make sure that we get taken care of.
Thank you.
Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just kind of piggyback on that. Is it possible to put provisions in place? There's some projects that obviously run later in the season than others, and grass growing is highly weather dependent. Is it possible to provisions into the contracts for erosion control measures that can take place, say, prior to winter, if we're not going to get sufficient root zone?
That's exactly what happened on Eagle's Landing, because we got past the seeding date. I can't remember what that seeding date was, but the project went beyond what that seeding date was, so they put in erosion control, which looks like hydroseed, but they put that on there in place, and it was rather confusing to a lot of people, so that's kind of one of the things where I learned that I need to talk to these people and explain to them that this isn't the final grade, because they, you know, they got kind of excited because it wasn't fine tuned, and so there's more work to be done up there to fine tune, but there won't be any seeding in Eagle's Landing until next spring, you know, when it's, so, yeah. So, they do, do put an erosion control on there for the winter, but like I said, I'll, I'm trying to make best effort to communicate with everybody, so everybody knows what's going on.
Thank you very much.
Just no comments or questions? Motion's been made and seconded to approve the, accept the project number 2001-A. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have Mr. Jim Anderson, who wishes to speak on an open forum in regards to the indoor range. Mr. Anderson. Staff, do you have the timer ready? Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you for giving us this opportunity to speak on an open forum. As it was stated, I'm here to discuss the indoor range and the lead level measurements. And I looked a little bit at the Federal Register, this new law that, or rule that they put in in January, was to reduce childhood exposure to lead. And their measurements are how many dust-led micrograms do you get in a square foot on a floor, or how many micrograms of lead dust do you get on a windowsill? Those are the two that were changed. And they went from 40 micrograms on a floor to 10 in a square foot, and 250 micrograms to 100 on a windowsill. The windowsill doesn't really apply to us downstairs in that range, but the square footage on the floor does. So, then I looked a little bit further down and looked at applicability and uses of that dust-led clearance level, and that dust-led clearance level is after abatement, after mitigation, you've gone in and you've cleaned it, what's still there. So, it has to be below those levels. So, this, this change is to apply to target housing, which is most pre-1978 housing, and COFs. And in parentheses, they have pre-78 non-residential properties where children six years of age or under spend a significant amount of time, such as childcare centers and kindergartens. And then it goes on to say, apart from COFs, no other public or commercial buildings are covered by this rule. So, now the question is COF, child occupied facilities, that definition. And they define that in what they call 40 space CFR space 745 period 223 definitions. Child occupied facility means a building or portion of a building constructed prior to 78, visited regularly by the same child, six years of age or under, on at least two different days within any week, Sunday through Saturday period, provided that each day's visit lasts at least three hours, the combined weekly visit lasts at least six hours, and the combined annual visit lasts at least 60 hours. Child occupied facilities may include, but are not limited to, daycare centers, preschools, and kindergarten classrooms. My contention is that I don't think we've got a child occupied facility there. We don't have a single child that's there for three hours at a time, or six hours over the course of a week, or 60 hours annually. One of the other concerns, of course, for the council is the cost of cleaning, and we have a big facility, big area there to clean. I looked at your 2024 capital, proposed capital expenditures, and you've got a, one in there for $75,000 for changing to an isolated entry to the range, which is a great idea. It would restrict the amount of area you have to clean, so you would drop it probably, what, a fifth or down to one-fifth, and that would significantly reduce that expense. The payback on that should be great.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Sorry. Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Gary Peterson, talking about the same issues.
I'm Gary Peterson. I'm here to share my concerns about the proposed decision to close the city auditorium indoor range. The problem is that the apparent EPA lead limits for preschool children are set so low that it would be economically feasible, not economically feasible, to meet them. I'd like to address two parts of this. First, does the city auditorium even meet the EPA definition of a child occupied facility? And I was going to read that, but Jim already read that, so I will skip that. I would seriously doubt that there are any children who meet this definition at the auditorium. I look forward to hearing what Rob Baumgart and the, and the Park and Rec Board have to say about this later in the meeting. Second, what are some alternatives? An obvious solution would be to not allow preschool children in the building. The city spends a lot of money on parks and the aquatic center for kids. In the winter, kids have activities at schools, churches, and at the Y. Shooters have limited options. In the summer, shooters may use the Eagle Lake Range. In the winter, there are no other options. Also, the Eagle Lake Range is never an option for permit to carry instructors. It's reserved for members. Now, I don't know how many preschool kids use the auditorium each year, but I am quite sure that it's far fewer than shooters who use the range. I, myself, have trained 700 shooters there in the last year through Minnesota gun class. Also, other permit to carry instructors use the range, and there are also shooters at the open shooting sessions. To wrap this up, by limiting access for preschool kids, the city would save an immediate $150,000 by not having to clean the building to the nearly impossible EPA standard. Kids could still use other facilities, and shooters could use this extremely valuable resource. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, the council doesn't make any comments or anything back. If there's things that you had asked question-wise, staff will get back with you, but I did not hear any specific questions, so I heard statements, so thank you for your comments. Appreciate that. Next, we are going to go to public hearings. The first two items are on the agenda, are the change to the charter, and we have Mr. Richard Ingham here to present on behalf of the Charter Commission. The problem we have, Mr. Ingham, is that we do not have eight council members here. So, what we will be doing is we'll be opening the public hearing. We will then be delaying the discussion on the public hearing until at such time that we can have seven council, eight council members present. So, go ahead and present your findings. I will open the public hearing at this time. If there are members of the public here that wish to make comment, feel free to make comments, but at this time, I will open the public hearing amending the ordinance, section 2.12 of the Charter of the City of Wilmer. Mr. Ingham.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, I'm happy to represent the Charter Commission here this evening. I do understand that this requires a unanimous vote of all members of the council, so I understand you can't take action without that. The Charter Commission recommends that Charter Commission, Charter section 2.12, in order to clarify that the city council is authorized to take action by simple motion in addition to acting by adopting a resolution by ordinance. As it, as it currently exists, section 2.12 suggests that council may only act on adopting an ordinance for certain specified categories of actions or by resolution for categories of actions not so specified. Section 2.12's omission of giving the council the option of simple motions as a valid manner of action by the council seems to contradict other sections of the charter, which contemplate council actions by motion. This is really just a, basically a cleaning up the process so the charter meets a reasonable way how you operate, and so the Charter, Charter Commission unanimously recommends that this be adopted.
Okay, are there any members of the public who wish to speak to this issue? Any members of the public who wish to speak to this issue? Council, what are your wishes? I would recommend entertaining a motion to continue the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to continue the hearing. Discussion? We will continue that hearing. Do I take a vote on that, sir?
I'd recommend a vote.
All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Mr. Ingham, the next is an ordinance amending section 5.02 of the Charter of the City of Wilmer. Again, the same application is present. We only have seven council members present. It takes eight in order to pass this, and so I would be willing to have you present your information, have the public hearing, and then continue the meeting until at such time that we have confirmation we will have seven, eight council members present. Mr. Ingham. I am opening the public hearing.
The Charter Commission recommends that the city council adopt an ordinance amending Charter section 5.02 in order to remove a reference to the Finance Subcommittee of the City Council, which the council recently discontinued along with its other subcommittees, Public Works, Public Safety, Labor Relations, Community Development. The four council's subcommittees that had existed for many years were established not by the Charter Commission, or by the Charter, as was the case for the Planning, Utilities, and Hospital Commissions, but by action of the council itself, and it is purely a means of how the council feels they can do their business in the best possible manner. So, the Charter, the Charter Commission recommends unanimously that this be adopted.
Okay, we have the public hearing has been opened. Any members of the public here to wish, wish to speak to this issue? Any members of the public here to speak to this issue? Seeing and hearing none, I will move to the council table with the recommendation, and we continue this hearing, and the council will discuss it in the future.
Motion to continue.
Second.
Motion been made in seconded to continue the hearing. Discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. Mr. Ingham, thank you for your presentation, and Ms. Inklandberg, thank you for being here as well. Appreciate that. Thank you for your work. Next, we have a public hearing, a resolution to approve Block 25 tax increment financing plan, and at this time, I will open that public hearing and turn it over to representatives from Baker Tilly.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Makayla Hewitt with Baker Tilly, and here to give you a brief overview of the tax increment financing proposal that's before you tonight. I know you had conversation at the last council meeting regarding it, and this is, again, to provide a brief overview and to answer any questions that you might have on the project or the tax increment financing tool. So, again, the purpose tonight, a brief overview of the project itself, how the project area qualifies for inclusion within a redevelopment tax increment financing district, what the requirements of that tax increment district will be, how the project costs for the district will be financed, and then next steps for consideration. So, the developer is proposing to develop an approximate 57-unit market rate apartment project on the site. The redevelopment project is planned to encompass the entire Block 25 area, which is nine parcels and about 1.18 acres. The building proposed to be redeveloped is about four stories, and it would include underground and surface parking to serve the project. The total anticipated development cost for the project is approximately $10 million, and the post-taxable assessed value upon completion of that project is just under $5.1 million. The developer is, the planned method of financing is the developer would incur all the costs upfront through a combination of private debt and equity related to redevelopment of that site and the new construction. There are certain requirements that have to be met for a project to be included within a redevelopment tax increment financing district. Listed here are the steps and the qualifications that had to be met. The parcels in the tax increment district, at least 70% of those must be occupied by buildings, streets, utilities, or parking lots, and more than 50% of the buildings need to be determined to be structurally substandard, and structurally substandard is defined as the, the cost of bringing that building into both code and condition deficiencies exceeds 15% of what the cost of new construction would be. So, in this case, the project qualifies, because 100% of the parcels are occupied, so all nine of those are occupied by either a building, parking lot, or gravel parking lot, and 100% of the existing buildings were deemed to be structurally substandard, and that information is also included within the exhibit of the tax increment financing plan that's included in your packet. There are some requirements on the use of the tax increment dollars that are generated by the proposed project, and the main ones to look, to consider is that 90% of the tax increments from that district must be used for costing, or for correcting costs associated with the district, and those include primarily acquisition, demolition, clearing of land, utilities, roads, sidewalks, and parking facilities. And all of the costs proposed to be financed with the tax increment revenues from this project would meet that, that requirement. The maximum term of redevelopment district is 26 years. However, the city's policy does have a limit, so the term that's being proposed for this one, the maximum term would be 15 years. Regarding the financing for the project, it's referred to as pays-as-you-go, meaning, again, the developer finances 100% of the public improvements and redevelopment costs upfront, and then would be reimbursed at a later point, once the, the tax increment revenues are generated. The reimbursement is limited to the amount of the TIF agreement and the level of tax increment that is generated from this project. One thing to point out with tax, with pays-as-you-go financing, there is no obligation for the city to, to fill any shortfalls of the developer. It's all the future revenues are on the developer, so there's no financial risk to the city with the pays-as-you-go concept. The total projected reimbursement amount is about $968,000, and that is the number of the budget within the tax increment financing plan. And again, the purpose of the tax increment dollars is to reimburse for a portion of the acquisition, demolition, site improvements, and other redevelopment costs of the project. Listed here is a chart showing the estimated public costs of the district. The total budget within the TIF plan is about $1,075,000, and again, that includes $968,000 for those TIF-eligible costs that would be reimbursed to the developer, with 10% retained by the city to cover administrative expenses over the life upfront and over the life of the district. And again, this budget is based on a 15-year collection period. Revenues and expenditures have to match in the TIF plan budget, so listed here to match the estimated public costs is the, the estimated tax increment revenues of the same amount of $1,075,000. So, the action item before you tonight, if you choose to proceed, would be to consider adopting the resolution that would create the tax increment district and adopt the tax increment financing plan, and that provides the authority for the city to use tax increment dollars per the terms of the tax increment plan, and at a later date, a development agreement would be brought back to the city council, and the development agreement contains the terms of the tax increment assistance between the city and the developer. So, again, this provides you with the authority to continue moving forward and using tax increment. So, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or step aside for the public comment portion.
At this time, is there anybody from the public who wishes to make comment to this item on the agenda? Anybody from the public who wishes to make a comment? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution designating a structurally substandard structure establishing tax increment financing district, Block 25. establishing tax increment financing district, Block 25 redevelopment project within Municipal Development District Number Two, and approving the tax increment financing plan relating thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Councilmember Fagerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, this is something new with the city. We didn't do TIF for housing until maybe six years ago, before it was for commercial and industrial. But I think it's a good project for downtown Wilmer. We looked at that site to build a city hall, and we decided against it, so I'm glad there was a developer to come in and want to put a four-story apartment building, so I think it's a great project, so.
No comments or questions? Rule call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Obstein.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Six ayes, zero nays, one abstain.
That resolution passes. Thank you for your time. Thanks for driving out today. Mrs.
Thank you.
Yes. Yes, you're welcome. Thank you. I'm killing names here today. I'm not, I'm not stopping, so. That's why I didn't introduce you by your last name, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to get it better, so. Councilmember Osk continues to tell me, "Mr. Mayor, you need to learn these names better." So, thank you, Councilmember Osk, for continuing to remind me of such, so. Next, we have a public hearing for an ordinance to rezone 4.1 acres from government institutional to agriculture, agricultural for Wilmer Poultry. And to present that is Mr. Adi Atu, our city planner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This is for the Wilmer Poultry Innovations. They are buying an additional 4.1 acres to the west and north of their existing property, and this is for the use of their turkey breeding. It's gonna continue to be for that use, and it really makes sense that the city rezoned that particular lot to ag, just so they can continue with their business. So, we are requesting to adopt an ordinance amending Wilmer Municipal District 1060 to rezone the Wilmer Poultry addition from government to agriculture.
So, the, thank you for introducing that. Is there anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Anybody from the public who wishes to speak on this rezoning? With that, I'll close it and bring it to the council table. Counsel?
Move to approve, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a rezone of 4.1 acres from government institutional to agricultural. Rule call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have a public hearing for an ordinance authorizing land sale to Wilmer Poultry. Again, Mr. Adu Atu for the presentation.
I think I was... I'm gonna, I'm gonna present this one.
Okay, our city administrator, Ms. Valiant, I only go by my sheet that's in front of me.
Yep, that's all right. So tonight's action is a motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing the sale to Wilmer Poultry Innovations, and to assign it a number and publish it. And also, there's a motion to publish a summary, ordinance by summary, and a motion to adopt a resolution approving the purchase agreement with Wilmer Poultry, and authorizing the mayor and the administrator to execute the purchase agreement on behalf of the city. Two weeks ago, probably three weeks ago, the council had made the, had a closed session on coming with the purchase agreement with Wilmer Poultry. They came to an agreed price of $41,000, $45,100. This is an additional 4.1 acres to their property, and we look that they plan on creating up to 20 jobs. And this will then trigger, this'll then finish this process for them, and then they plan on starting their construction very soon.
Okay, so there's, we have opened the public hearing, we've heard the introduction, authorizing land sale to Wilmer Poultry, and to adopt the motion, assign it a number, and publish it. This is a public hearing. Anybody from the public who wishes to speak? Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the 4.1 acres that is being sold to Wilmer Poultry in the amount of $45,100? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it to the council table. Counsel, your wishes?
I'll start with the first one, make a motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing land sale to Wilmer Poultry.
Sir.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the land sale, assign it a number, and publish it. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, I'd entertain a motion to publish the ordinance by summary.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to publish the ordinance by summary. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes as well. Next is a resolution approving the purchase agreement and authorizing the city administrator and mayor to sign on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Rule call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Mr. Heisinga was here to speak in case anybody had any questions of him, but Mr. Heisinga, we're pleased to have this project coming to Wilmer, the 20 additional jobs, but also more importantly, the economic impact that your business has in the expansion of that with this project. So thank you very much for choosing Wilmer and staying in Wilmer. We do appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you for getting this passed before, should we get it before winter?
No problem. Thank you. No, you can stick around or you can leave. It looks like you're leaving.
No. If you don't need, if you need, you may.
Well, Leslie has your number. Okay. Next, we have a consideration of environmental services and operations for the auditorium gun range. Mr. Gary Manzer.
Good morning, or good morning. Good evening, mayor and council. I'm gonna pass out a little bit of information, it's just some repeat of some of the information that was in your packet, boss. Okay, Rob and I are gonna tag-team this thing, as the engineering department was the one that was originally overseeing this project, and with Rob and I have been working together on it, and I'm telling you, it's come with a lot of heartache and whatnot to get to this point, so I'm just gonna recap some of the stuff that we went through and to get to where we're at, and then look for your guidance on what we want to do going forward. So we, what we did was we, we met with a couple of different outfits that do the cleaning of it, and basically, they come to the fact that with these new levels of lead, it's estimated that would cost us about $148,000 to change the ballistic blocks and clean the basement and the first floor of the building. This does not include the additional cleaning trips if the lead testing does not pass, and for each of those trips, it's another $20,000. And when we had the range cleaned back in 19 to 40 parts per million, and now it's 10 parts per million based on the occupancy of children, it took extra four cleaning trips. So, the other thing we did is we looked at alternatives. One of the alternatives we looked at was possibly using a side entrance that comes in off the alley, and we met over there with the fire chief and Tom Rosemeyer, our building inspector. We looked at the possibility of closing off some hallways and some, and creating some doorways, but once we go into the development of changing doorways and closing off parts of it, it brings the ADA into compliance, and then that skyrockets things as far as Let's see. The other thing that we, we looked at was the possibility, we talked about the possibility of if closing the building off the children was a thing, and with the winter activities that go in there, and there's, I know there's a church group that meets there every Sunday, we just didn't feel that that was a viable option. Some of the statistics that we had from the year of 2020 and 2021, the indoor range, this is not counting the concealed carry or the private rentals, because we're on the way of tracking how many people are using it, the facilities, are just public shoots that they have. There was 196 shooters, and out of that 196 shooters, 49 of those were Wilmer residents, 151 were non-residents of Wilmer, and there were six junior shooters. So, and the average revenue was around, I don't know, like in that $3,000 to $4,000 range. As you can see, let's see here, what it takes to clean the facility, I gotta find that page. So Chris, and we have three people assigned to clean that facility. I don't have that sheet right in front of me, but I know it was a couple times a week, and then it was every once, I don't know if it was every few weeks, they'd get together and have a three, yeah. So during the off-peak season, the city employees rotate months of responsibility cleaning the range, and on the average, the gun range has, cleans, it's on a weekly basis. The group of three employees still meet the first Monday of every much month and clean the range. During the cleaning process, each employee is wearing all the PPE that's required, and are in hazmat suits and full face respirators required as by OSHA. So, I guess at this point, I would just say I could stand for any questions unless Rob wants to make a comment. I guess just one of the things that I, I have to say as supervisor of employees, I always draw a red flag when I have to hazmat my people to do a, do a job, and so that's just, that's a personal, as an employer. I compare it to doing sewers. We don't go down the sewer line unless it's absolutely necessary, and then there's a whole process to doing that. So, based on that, I'll just stand, unless Rob, you want to add anything, unless, I guess we're looking for your guidance on what you want us to do.
Okay, this issue is coming before the council. I know that the Public Works Committee has looked at this a number of times. I know that the...
Yeah, as the Park Committee looked at it as well.
Yeah, Park Committee.
Recently, the Park Department, or the Park Board, yep.
Yep. And so, the Parks Board, I think, has looked at this at least twice, maybe not three times, four times, that the Park Board has looked at it. And I know that, I know that in reviewing minutes from before, the Public Works Committee had looked at it, but really no report came to us, so. So this is good to see this report. So with that, counsel, I guess, I guess council staff is looking for discussion and looking for us to provide them some direction. So with that, Mr. O'Brien.
What would you be doing with the equipment now in there if you closed that?
Well, I would assume that, I mean, I don't know, because that, that would be, have to be a decision, but I would, if it's like any other surplus city equipment, it has to go on some sort of public auction, whether it's on a web auction or a, our own city auction. I think most time, unless I'm speaking on a churn, would have to go to a public auction, unless you chose to maybe donate it to something, that maybe be an option too. But I couldn't really speak for that. Mr. O'Brien?
Mr. Scott, can you answer that question for us?
Mayor, members of the council, part of the answer depends on the value of the actual equipment, so I probably can't give you a definitive answer, but it would either need to be included in one of the city's auctions, whether electronic or the main city auction in person, or potentially, there's an opportunity where the city could negotiate, but the city would still need to receive multiple quotes for the sale price. But I think I would need to get a little more information on the value and what exactly is included in the equipment and advise city staff accordingly.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
I personally, my job that I had before I retired, I've taught literally thousands of kids in that range, okay? This really digs deep into my heart. This is not good to close this range. I don't know the cost we're talking about here. I see different back and forth, but I can tell you right now that to take away the opportunity for these kids to learn to shoot a gun properly, this goes against everything I believe in. Thanks to all the volunteers that I've had over the years, I mean, I'm talking all the school districts, you name them, in Candaway County, every single one of them were involved. And I would just really hate to take away the opportunity. I think Mr. Fagerly just had his grandson, they had to travel to Blaine to shoot. I don't think we need to send our kids to Blaine to shoot. So I, just if we can do something to help this situation, and I don't have the answer, but I guess I, I literally have taught thousands of kids in that basement with my help and my instructors, and I would really hate to see that opportunity go away, because now more than ever, we need to train these kids safety. They need to know about firearms. I would just really, really be against closing that range.
Andrew?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, I'll begin by saying I have a great appreciation for staff and the job that you guys are tasked with, that compliance and safety and all of those items are of utmost importance, and especially when you bring up safety and when you start talking about, you know, lead and hazmat type, type items. The area that, that caused me just a little bit of pause and reflection is when we're talking about making a move in response to a federal mandate that's come down that has changed, changed, or essentially shifted the goalposts. And, and what I mean by that is, if before 40 parts per million was deemed safe, but now that has all of a sudden changed to 10 parts per million, I feel like, was that not safe the entire time? And we just, we didn't know it, or nobody decided to enforce it? I know OSHA and EPA and MPC regulations are changing all the time, and a lot of times it's for the better, but sometimes I wonder if regulation just doesn't happen for regulation's sake. And I know that sometimes a bar is set intentionally where it is because that bar is unachievable. And at the current rate, at the current prices that, that we're seeing for, for compliance, that's financially not feasible. And I don't know if that's by design, I don't, I don't know what it would actually take to, to reach compliance, but it's a little bit, it's a little bit frustrating to me when there are numbers that are set or deemed as safe by our federal government, and then our federal government changes those numbers, and then it's up to cities like us all across the nation to comply with what is now deemed not safe, what was a year ago safe. And so, when an instance like that happens, it causes me pause, and I say, you know, I guess my, my personal response to that is to stop and do some reflection, but then also to dig into it just a little bit more, and I do believe that there are certain, there are certain guidelines in terms of types of facilities, facility locations, you know, the personnel, and I did some my own research going into this, and I do believe that we're still in a gray area. I am, I am personally in favor of doing more research before taking action on this, because I don't believe that we have all of the essential information that it would take to, to make a decision. I think if, if that is the final decision of the council, then, then I'll respect that, and I'll respect the work of, of staff that got us there, but I do believe that it's, it's probably our responsibility to ask the right questions and to make sure that whatever compliance we're, we're trying to achieve is, is absolutely necessary that we do achieve, because if it's, if we're only achieving compliance for the sake of achieving compliance, and it's not actually achieving any practical amount of safety, then what are we doing it for? Then we're simply taking away an asset that, that existed before. So that would be my position on the issue. I would like to, to do a little bit more research on the facilities, the types of facilities, where the, the measurements are taken and exactly what those measurements need to be, and how and why the changes came to be, and then also what the, what the ramifications are for, for non-compliance. And I think that last part is, is probably crucial, maybe, the ramifications for non-compliance, who would be the presiding who would be the presiding jurisdiction over that, and what that would look like, and maybe that's something that our legal advisory team could look into a bit for us. Thank you.
Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wondering, what if they would go with lead-free shells? I shoot a 22, and they're lead-free bullets, and then the playground in the auditorium, how often is that used?
The playground was removed from the auditorium to install the filter system, and as far as lead-free goes, I mean, that's definitely an option, but does not take away the fact that we still have to clean the facility, and when we cleaned it in 2014 during that renovation, $200,000 was spent to get to a level 40 parts, whatever the parts per million. And so the other side of it we talked about is the enforcement of lead-free would be a difficult task for a staff member, because people come in with bags of, you know, with their stuff, and are you infringing on their, when you need to see what they've got? It's another rule that we have to try to enforce. I mean, certainly we talked about it, lead-free, and it's an option, you know, I guess we felt it would be difficult for our staff to enforce that, you know, in the evening, you know, it's usually part-time staff that would be doing that, so. I mean, I guess, yeah, that's definitely an option, I wouldn't say it's not an option.
Okay, so if the playground is taken out of there, where are the six-year-olds and under?
There's a church, I know there's a church there every Sunday morning. Rob has different gymnastics and whatnot that go on there through the winter time in the gymnasium area there. And I mean, Rob could speak to the programming better than I can, but I know for a fact that there's a church there every Sunday morning.
But we're just building a new event center. They could have gymnastics out there, and when the Y came in and said we would cooperate with them for programming, doesn't seem like our park and rec board wants to do that now, so that's what we have to do, is start cooperating more with the school and the Y, so.
Well, I don't know about the Y, but I think Rob could speak to it, but we do lots of things with the schools. I know we share, we share facilities with the schools quite often, but as far as the YMC, I can't, I can't speak to that. I guess, speaking of programming, I probably should turn it over to Rob, because he'd have a better handle on that than I would.
You see, I was on the council when they did this improvement, the $2 million, and I wasn't for it. I proposed a standalone building on the rural tire shop, and that wasn't approved by the council, so I can go either way with this, but I want the people to be safe, especially the little kids, but there's really no need for the little kids to go in there anymore.
Yeah, if you want to shut the facility off to young children, I mean, then that probably solves it, if that's what, you know, you choose to do. We're just kind of presenting what we're up against, you know, and as far as, we don't make the rules as far as the 10 parts, but I know when it went to 40, it was hard to obtain it, and so, you know, the cleaners have actually told us that they thought, like Mr. Anderson said, 10 is just about unachievable, and then, like I said to you, I do feel for the people that have to do that cleaning every day, too, and so, it's, you know, we presented it to you guys, and I guess we're looking for guidance, what you want us to do.
Okay, with that, I'll go to council, I'll go to Justin, and then I'll go to Julie, and then I'll go back to Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of questions. First of all, is the staff convinced that this is a child-occupied facility according to the standards?
Mayor, members of the council, it is a child-occupied facility, because there are going to be children that are going to be of that age in the facility, we just don't know when they're going to be in there with all the activities that are going on, from the church group that's in there from Sundays from 8 to 11, or if a parent brings a child in when they're playing basketball, pickleball, volleyball, we just have never monitored that. So that'd be a thing that we would have to look at, is how are we going to monitor that facility if we're going to keep it open, the gun range open at that time, we'd have to monitor it.
Okay, and based on your current understanding, does that mean that it would meet the definition proposed by the federal regulations?
Well, if we just, if the daycare that the church uses from 3 to 11, that's three hours, that's in that two hours per week, and then if you do the math of, if it's all year, they would meet the reach of 60 hours.
Okay, thank you, and any indication, as I'm looking at the yearly range use data, in 2021, it takes a substantial decrease. Is that because we're not done with the year yet? What's any kind of explanation about why that's so low?
COVID.
It's not that low in 2021.
We didn't have it, we didn't have it open in, we didn't have it open last fall, and I think we just started resuming that at the first of the year, so, and there couldn't have been not as many shooters that have came down.
Okay, and then one last question, so I think you referred to that Parks and Rec has been working on this for a while, I think maybe four months is the comment that you had made, and I'm sure they've done a lot of work and done some research here. Councilmember Plowman is indicating that perhaps there's more research to be done. Has Parks and Rec, has the staff at any point done some of that research that Councilmember Plowman was referring to?
We have. I think probably the best for us to do as a board or in council is to have Greg Myers from the environmental service consultant that we have been using to come in and explain lead and the ramifications of lead, how to clean lead, and why we are at where we're at today with the EPA and the standards that we have. So that might be the best route to go, is to have him come in and explain lead contamination, and the reason why, of the surface areas that have to be cleaned because of the cross-contamination from going from the range, up the stairs, and lobby, and into the gym, and that's where it's really gotten to be costly because of the amount of surface area that has to be cleaned.
Okay, then, I said that was my final question, I have another one, I guess. Any ramifications for us not taking action on this tonight?
No, the range is scheduled to open, if the council chooses to have it open right now, we can, our staff is ready to have it open, and I'm sure that the range officers would be happy to have it open as well. We just have to, we have to get it cleaned eventually, and that's what it kind of boils down to, is how much money does a city want to put in to clean the facility?
All right, thank you.
Next, we have Councilmember Osmus, followed by Councilmember O'Brien.
Okay, I'm just going to touch on a number of the different points that have been discussed. As far as the damage of lead, I think we know that, I mean, we used to paint houses with lead paint, we just know better now. So when they change the requirements, it's because they know better now, and when the staff has to wear PPE to go in and clean it, it's because they know the danger. So we know that lead is going to be an issue. I feel like the only answer on this problem, we have been dealing with this for how many years, what, five years ago, six years ago, we put the million in there to put in the new ventilation system because we knew it was an issue then, and it got us five or six more years. Now it's starting to cost more with the ballistic blocks, even if we don't go to the 10 parts, even if we stayed with the 40 parts, it's still going to be 150 to 200,000 a year to clean. To get down to the 10 parts, we're talking removing the ceiling, redoing the floor to get it down, because that would be permeated with the lead. We go to the lead-free issue. We've had two different park and rec meetings where people from the range have come and said that to have truly accessible lead-free ammunition, it was three to five years down the road, and they said some is available, but it's going to be more expensive, and whether or not the people who use the range want to use that, and then if you would get into that, who's going to monitor, as we touched on, who's going to monitor the ammunition that's coming in, and even if it gets down to the primers, is there lead in the primers? Some are manufactured with it, and some are manufactured without, and especially if they're loading their own, and is that going to be allowed? So I just, it's important that we train people for safe gun usage, especially our kids, no question. I think we have six, seven, or eight months out of the year that we can do that outside. Otherwise, for an indoor range, it has to be a standalone facility. This is a community building, it's a gymnasium, I just, we have tried, and it just isn't working to have the lead and the gun range in the auditorium. I just, we had talked at the park and rec meeting about, we went through the thing about not having children in there, it's a community building, and it's going to be used by the community. I don't see that as a viable option. I just think it has to be a standalone building, that's the only way it's going to work.
Councilmember O'Brien?
The lead count in that building without the range, what is it?
How would you know?
I can't answer that.
So you really don't know how much lead is being added by the pistol range?
Pardon me?
You really don't know how much lead is being added by the pistol range?
I guess I, I think that answer could be phoned, but I can't answer it right now.
I think that's one of the answers we should find. The other one is, we know-
Councilmember O'Brien, could you repeat? You want to know what?
I want to know what the lead count in that building is before, without the pistol range. When you're not shooting, what's the lead count? Are there issues with that building?
Hold on, I'm in here, guys.
That's so hard to understand? Is there issues with that building and lead?
I thought that was all taken care of.
Yeah, I think back in 214, they got that lead level under control.
They did a lot of painting?
Yeah, encapsulated a lot of it, and part of that cleaning and removal of equipment, that was all done in 2014, and that was at that 40, you know, tested down to that level or less.
Councilmember Nelson.
I'm not, I'm not done yet, okay? What do we charge individuals or groups right now for the use of that range?
Well, the open fees last year collected, so far this year was $1,150, and the rental was about 4,400.
Okay, what do you charge groups that come in?
For the public open shooting, it's $8 for a half an hour, and then it's-
$8?
$8 for a half an hour, and then it's $80 an hour to rent the range.
$80 for the range?
Yep, for concealed and carry classes.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you.
Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor Calvin. I too was around the first time before we made the decision to do this, and this is a very difficult subject. I would agree with Councilmember Fagerly that we probably didn't do ourselves a favor by continuing down this road, but I think Councilmember Osmus said it very well, we bought ourselves a few more years. We're looking at a historic building, there's a need for these services, I think she touched on, there's outdoor services, it's maybe time to look at something different. What's striking to me is I remember the last time we did a search to see how many cities actually provided or had an indoor gun range, and if I remember correctly, there were only one or two in the whole state of Minnesota, and-
No, I guess we're at zero now.
Okay, and we did our homework then to look at that. This is a safety issue, this is not about discrimination, et cetera, there has to be a different way to do this, and we have a responsibility to provide safety and to utilize that building as we look at preserving it, and I don't know that we can get any more information, I think it's here in front of us. We knew this was coming, we were informed of this at Public Works, that the thing, the statistics were changing, and that we were in trouble, and I think it's time to just acknowledge it and to figure out a way that this can be done outside of, the community needs to find a way to do this outside of public, a public entity, and it's uncomfortable, but I think it's time to make a decision, and I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to accept the Park and Rec Board's recommendation to close the auditorium gun range.
Second?
Most have been made and seconded to consider, to close the auditorium gun range, and I'm assuming that's for safety reasons, for safety reasons. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'm going back and forth on first names, because two meetings ago, I said I was going to start using first names, but when you guys keep calling me Mr. Mayor, it makes me uncomfortable calling you by your first name, so Councilmember Plowman. So if you're wondering why I'm doing this, that's why I'm doing it. It's not out of disrespect, as Councilmember Nelson just stated in her motion, so.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor Calvin.
It's getting worse.
Okay, I can, I can understand, I guess I can understand the direction that we're going in, I can begin to understand the perspective. What causes me a little bit of heartburn is moving this direction without having a plan of action, and I understand that this might not be the cultural norm for municipally-owned gun ranges, now, this may be something that's obsolete, I don't know, but it's not yet obsolete in Wilmer, so making, you know, making a transition is going to be a little bit, a little bit difficult. The part that I struggle with is the fact that it is and has been an amenity to community members, and also offering, you know, an amenity of value, I would say, adding to the safety of the gun community, of children, hunters, target shooters, sportsmen, and whatnot, thousands and thousands and thousands of them, as well as accomplished shooters. So I think it's a difficult thing when we go down the path of removing an amenity whilst at the same time, you know, using different budgets and different financing mechanisms for other amenities. It's no secret, and the argument can be made that the city spends a lot of money on park and rec, and on our, you know, capital improvements, and on the street programs and whatnot, many, many, many millions of dollars. So removing what has been a long-time amenity is a difficult thing to do. I would feel, personally, I would feel more comfortable doing so if we had some sort of plan in place moving forward. I don't know how or where that plan comes from, I don't want that plan to be mine, because I would have to start from the very beginning, and I think that there's smarter people that can take part in that discussion, but I would feel more comfortable with it if there was at least a plan so that there wasn't this abrupt stop, because we have so much else on our, on our plate, so to speak, with running the city, that I am worried that if the facility is closed and the conversation ends there, and then it's just done, and then there is no moving forward, and it's just kind of one of those things where we just go, sorry, that's it. And I worry about that, because again, whether or not it's status quo, I guess I don't really care, up until now, it has been an amenity funded by our city and funded by our taxpayers, just like our parks, just like our trails, just like our roads, just like our infrastructure, and there is a population of our community that deems that important, so I guess I'm speaking on behalf of that portion of the population as well. With that said, I will respect whatever decisions made by the council.
Just some comments or questions, most on the table. Councilmember Davis?
Well, I've been here for a long time, so I've had kids play at the auditorium, and I've had kids go to gun safety training at the auditorium. I think for me, it comes down to safety, much like Julie said, and if our employees aren't safe, if we can't allow kids to play in there, I think that's a problem, and, but I agree with Andrew that we can't just shut it immediately, I think we should look for another plan, even if we help the gun community think of a way to have a standalone building or something, like the curlers are doing, you know, they're funding their own, so that's kind of how, where I- They're funding their own, so that's kind of how, where I stand on that.
Councilmember Osmas.
I was going to say a little bit of what Andrew had talked about as far as it being an asset and an amenity to our community. Obviously, given my past occupation, I'm not anti-gun, and I'm definitely not anti-gun range and anti-gun safety to offer that to the public. But we, this is not going to work with it in the auditorium. We also have an outdoor range, and a lot of discussion has been had at the park meetings about the improvements that have to happen out there. And it's not going to be this year, it's not going to be next year, but improvements have to happen out there. I think as part of that discussion, maybe something like this range could go into that, the improvements that maybe have to happen out there, but presently, unfortunately, it just doesn't work in the present location.
Just, Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you. This happened last time, too, and closing the gun range does not have anything to do with being anti-gun or not wanting to provide services with that. I think the, we, this is step one in my mind. If, if there are people in this community that want to have a gun range, they'll find a way to do that. If we can help in contributing the equipment, that's a different subject. This is about the safety and about what's before us tonight. And so I think the responsibility lies with us to, for keeping that building open and safe to the, to the community, and what happens after this, I don't know that we can have a plan right now. I don't think, as we, in the past, as you're talking about, whether, that this can be a public building. It, it isn't used for training. We have a different facility to use for training. That is not open to the public, and I think we need to look at other, what other communities do. There has to be another way for the, for this to occur in our community without it being owned by the city.
Councilmember Plowman, followed by Councilmember O'Brien.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We're starting to come together.
Yeah, yeah, I'm feeling, I'm feeling the direction this is going, so I guess I'm just going to say this so that it, that it's for the record, and I, I hope it becomes part of the public record. If this happens, if, if, if the city decides to close this facility, then I would highly encourage private entities, private individuals, groups of people, and then also, I, I, I hope that we have staff and, and that our park board is, is ready and willing and able to potentially work with those groups of individuals or, or private, private individuals, maybe entrepreneurs. Maybe there is something the city can do in working with those individuals to create a, to create a workable solution that may just be able to keep these amenities in the city. If they're not going to be provided by the city, then maybe there is a way that the city can help remove some of that red tape or remove the obstruction or the difficulty with, with helping create something like that on the free market system, because after all, I guess if we, if we believe in capitalism and, and the free markets, then the free markets can provide a way, and if the demand is there, the free market should be able to provide a solution, but therefore, I believe it's incumbent on us as a municipality and as a board of policymakers to then try as, as best as possible to create streamlined ways for that to happen, so as to not create obstructions or difficulties. Maybe there's a way that we can work with those groups hand in hand to come up with a, a better solution than, and a more long-term solution with some permanency that benefits all individuals. I'll end with that, thank you.
Okay, and again, I'm trying to bring us together to a vote. Councilmember O'Brien.
Earlier, I asked the question, what would you do with the equipment that's there? Okay? The reason I asked that question is I happen to know people who may be interested with a little enticement, and I think we're talking about the city trying to work with the people. So I think that works hand in hand. There is interest, because people do not want to see our kids untrained, point blank. They do not want that to happen, and I'm sure you guys don't want that to happen. But I could say, if what we can do as a city is imperative in how we can get this to move, I, I like the discussion. I'm not totally convinced, and, and I'm really, I really, really, really like to know what the lead count is in that building, period.
I just want to make one comment to you, Mr. O'Brien. Rob and I truly want what's best for the kids in this town.
Yep.
And by no means are we got an agenda here. We're, we're tasked with being fiscally responsible as, as we, what we can, so that's why we're bringing it to you folks to make the decision. If you choose to keep it open, that's great, then we know what direction we go. If you choose to close it, that's great, we know what directions go. It's, I'm just, this is not mine or Rob's decision, so I just want to reiterate that. I don't have an agenda here. I hunt, I, I take it off in two days for a week of hunting, so I'm all in on guns, believe me. But at the same token, I have to make sure that everything I have in my, under my umbrella, including my employees, that are kept to the highest standard to keep people safe. That's-
Totally, I understand that, and I know you're not, this isn't your agendas, I totally know that, too, but I could say, and like what Vicky said, is we just can't shut it down. We got to be able to have a plan. We need Plan A, Plan B. We need to have something, not just shut this thing down, let it go, because if we do that, that's what'll happen. So we got to come up with a plan.
Okay, um, thank you. Rob, I've got a couple of specific questions for you, and I hope you're able to answer them. I believe you are. Something that we've heard regularly, and I believe was made, a comment was made in opening comments this evening, is that other recreational facilities cost money along with gun range. So do we have any idea on what the cost of operating the pool is? Because that's what continually gets thrown in my face, is that it costs a lot more money to run the pool than it does the gun range. And the math that I've done shows that the gun range is about, the, the expense to income ra, ratio is about three point nine four percent, uh, three point nine four to one, and for operating the pool is about two point six five to one. And so we're all about investing in our kids, as we know by the local option sales tax and by things that have been done, but those numbers, I think, have to get out there, because people keep throwing this at me when I'm at meetings, so it costs a lot more to run the pool than it does the gun range. Well, those ratios don't seem to add up on the math that I do. Is that consistent with what you see?
Mayor, what I've done is the expense for the aquatic center this past year was two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars to run that facility, and it was a good year for us. This year, we brought in eighty-two thousand dollars, so we're about at thirty-three percent, you know, of what we are with that. I also do it with the Civic Center. It's about six hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars to run the Civic Center, and we bring in roughly about three hundred and twenty-six, so we're, we're right around that fifty percent mark of being subsidized and not subsidized.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, are you, are you ready to vote?
I, can I just add something, too? We do have facilities, or the gun range being used, so if there is a decision tonight of closing that facility, our agreement with the Pistol Club is a ninety days' notice.
Right.
And so I think in all fairness, if, if that's the decision, that we still honor that ninety, ninety days, because there are, there are concealed and carry classes, and we can still have some of the public shooting going and everything going on.
So the motioner's okay with that? Is the seconder okay with that? And I believe that that's in an agreement, right, a signed agreement?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Where are we at on the ballistic block turnover?
They're going to have to be replaced.
Before this, in the next ninety, for the next ninety day?
I can check with, with the consultant to see if we have to get those replaced. If we have to get them replaced, then it's going to be difficult for us to have the ninety days, but I want to be able to at least have the option for them to use it if the, if the blocks aren't going to be able to be used still.
They're, they're not in that.
Okay.
Gary, can you come to the table, please?
I have several classes down there every month, and, and most of them are in great shape. They will not need to be replaced in the next ninety days.
Okay. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a, a question. I, I support the ninety days, but if for some reason, I know we had some, and I know there were issues with controlling that in the past, that they don't shoot into, some of them, if they were bad, can we put some, do we need anything additional in there that we're not investing in the ninety days timeframe? I'm, I'm fine with the ninety days, but do we need any other conditions in it that we aren't investing in it?
I'm good. These guys are down there all the time, so they, they know it better than I do with the ballistic blocks about how much lead is in there. But there's also, you know, if there's, if we're looking towards the future, there's also different blocks, if you want to say, out there. When we went and toured a facility up in St. Cloud, they went to a granular system that would be probably more beneficial if we do, do a different range inside.
Okay, let's, let's state, let's state this question on the table. Councilmember Nelson.
Well, I just remember from Public Works meeting that there were conversations about making sure that there was control, that someone didn't shoot hundreds and hundreds of rounds into one particular one, and that had been an issue, and I think, I think that was addressed, and I'm not sure that it's an issue anymore, I'm just remembering it from past.
I'm sure with Jim and them down there, that they make sure that the certain lanes are being moved around, so we're not all shooting at lane one or lane two.
Mr. Anderson.
Well, that, that was one of the comments I was going to make, was that we can, we can staff it such that we'll fill these lanes first. If we get real full, then we're going to be shooting at all the, the blocks. But given COVID and the ammunition shortage that occurred, that's why we were down on usage the last year, the price rise has also hurt.
Okay.
But we can also alternate to make sure we try to hit the most, the least-used blocks.
Okay, thank you. Additional comments, otherwise, I'm ready to vote. For the city attorney, on my page, it says that this is a motion with a roll call. Is that necessary to have a roll call on this, or is it a simple motion, isn't it? It's not a resolution.
Mayor, my understanding was, is a, a motion, you would not need a roll call for that unless a member requested it.
I'm going to do a simple motion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close the polls?
No.
That motion carries. Thank you for your presentation, and gun range users and the guys down there, thank you for the work that you do. We do appreciate that. Next, we have a presentation of Wilmer Municipal Utilities' 2022 Budget and Ten Year Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. Heron.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. Uh, this evening, I would like to introduce to you our finance and office supervisor, Office Services Supervisor, Andrea Perker. Andrea's been with us about a year and a half. She's doing a fantastic job for us in our finance department, and she will go over the highlights of our 2022 budgets and our capital improvement plan. Andrea.
Thank you. Good evening. So our 2022 budget that we are presenting was approved by the Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission at the September thirteenth, 2021 meeting. Overall, our budgets are steady. The intergovernmental transfer hazard remained flat. However, we are starting to see that our KWH sales are increasing, so that could change. Per the 2015 agreement, that intergovernmental payments are never reduced and are based on a five-year rolling average. I'm looking at our capital projects. The statement of cash flows incorporates the capital projects over a ten-year period. Starting with the electric division, we can see what our net cash balance would be after factoring in our anticipated revenues, operating expenses, and other items, along with the capital projects for each given year. The statement of cash flow assumes no rate increase. Our last electric rate increase was in 2015. With the next rate study, it is anticipated that there may be some adjustments to our current rates, but overall, revenue would remain unchanged. The next page is the statement of cash flows for the water division, and is set up in the same manner. And notice that in 2022, we have incorporated bonding for the water treatment plant project. This is factored into the net cash balance at the bottom of the report. A rate increase of five percent is included for 2022 and 2023, revenue as approved in the last rate ordinance. We are working on obtaining some grant funding for the water treatment plant project. However, if that is unsuccessful, an additional rate increase beginning in 2024 will be inevitable. And the final page is a combination of the statement of cash flows for the utility as a whole.
Can someone run and grab Mr. Engen before he takes off, please? Mr. Engen, Richard? Go ahead.
That is all I have. Unless there are any questions.
Okay, and so you're looking for action for the council? Okay, so, yeah. Councilmember Butterfield was telling me he was going to be here at 7:30, so I don't want you to take off in case we can take a vote, so in case there's questions, I don't want to mess this whole thing up.
Well, there's no action required by the council this evening. This is informational. By charter, we're required to present the budget to the, to the council, so.
Okay.
This is our presentation of the budget.
Sure, so and I had on my, on my thing that I needed a motion, and I was going, well, we didn't do one last year, so what are we doing on this year? So, but on my cheat sheet, it said I needed a motion, that's why I was asking. Anybody have questions for Municipal Utilities on their presentation? Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you for the presentation and the numbers. They are meticulously gone over, as, as is annually the case, so that's much appreciated. What are we seeing in terms of long-term forecasting? Everybody's talking, everybody's talking inflation, everybody's talking logistics chains, everybody's talking energy forecasts. As far as a municipality, what are your best projections, which we know are, things can change drastically and dramatically, but where are we sitting in terms of looking at winter 2021, 2022?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Plowman. Excellent question. We have long-term power supply. Energy's all long-term, long-term planning, long-term contracts. We have a contract with GRE out to 2024. There are slight increases in that contract. We have a contract with Wisconsin Public Power, refer to it as WIPPI, that's our hydro. There as well, that's locked in out to 2023 with increases slightly more than what is in our GRE contract. Our WAPA contract, that's also a long-term contract, that goes out to 2050. That contract right now is our lowest-priced power, and right now, depending on weather, on a drought, we may or may not see an increase in our WAPA contract in 2023. In 2022, our rates will remain stable. Our power supply, our joint action agency that we partnered up with here a year and a half ago, for 2022, we just received notice that we will have a half a percent reduction in our wholesale energy. So our power supply into 22, 23 will remain very stable, so.
May I follow? Okay, thank you for that. Yeah, I guess, believe it or not, there are doomsday scenarios that float around on the internet and everywhere else, and, and people are talking about the cost of electricity doubling over the winter, and so that's kind of why I asked the baited question, but you can say with somewhat confidence that we're not going to be seeing any near-term spikes, per se.
Correct.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for the Municipal Utilities? And thank you for your work, we do appreciate you guys.
Thank you.
Good work. Thank you. Next, we have consideration, consider approval of funding for the downtown street replacements. Again, we'll turn to our Planning Development Services.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, what I'm bringing forward tonight is a resolution to authorize funding for some new streetlights downtown. This is something that's been kind of on the table for a while, all the way back, in fact, to the 2012 downtown plan, which contemplates that the current lights that we have down there that were installed, I believe, in the eighties or nineties, will reach the end of their useful life by 2022. And we are indeed kind of starting to see that decline. We know that there are, you know, I can't go too in-depth to it from a non-technical perspective, but we know that there are issues with maintenance, we know that there's decline in the aesthetics of the lights, and so it's been sort of an objective of the cities for a long time now. And so it's been sort of an objective of the cities for a long time now to have those replaced. And accordingly, in, in 2020, the city and utilities, when we revised our installation and maintenance agreement for the streetlights, it was arranged that we would replace 208 streetlights downtown. And within that agreement, it was agreed that utilities would cover sort of that baseline for the, you know, installation replacement and maintenance of any standard fixture, and then that the cost of any, you know, additional, you know, decorative features that the city might want to have on those poles, the city would be responsible for the cost of that. And so with that in mind, by way of public input, by way, by way of council consultation, and also consultation with a number of different groups, including the Main Street Board, and I believe, you know, different public input committees, we identified a model we wanted to pursue, that is, a model of streetlights we wanted to pursue, that has a couple of different functional and aesthetic improvements and upgrades from the current model. That is, it has brackets on the pole that, from which decorative, I guess decorations can be hung, so includes flowerpots, banners, really whatever you can hang on there. And there also are upgrades sort of in the bulb in terms of, you know, the, the light is dispersed in a way that's more effective and whatnot, and has decorative glass around the bulb. And so what we're looking at is a total project cost of $968,600. And per that arrangement, per that split of the cost that I mentioned earlier, that comes out to $390,000 in materials alone for utilities, and the utilities will also contribute an additional $120,000 in labor for the project. The city's total cost for their contribution is $578,600, and that includes $566,600 for decorative features alone. And then also included in that figure is another $12,000 for repairs to the light's concrete bases, and that $12,000 figure includes both labor and materials. Now, utilities has been very generous. They've agreed to foot the cost of the entire project this year, which approaches $1 million, and to pay for, to cover its portion of the cost, the city will reimburse utilities in '22 and '23, using expenditures that are budgeted for in those years, CIPs, as follows. That is $250,000 in the '22 CIP, and $316,600,000 in the '23 CIP. Now, it's very important to estimate that all of these costs, excuse me, it's very important to emphasize that all of these costs are estimated. It's a very volatile market, as we all know with inflation driving things up. These costs are based on a 30% contingency. I certainly hope and can imagine that we rise above that 30% contingency, and, but we're fairly confident in these numbers, but they are still, at the end of the day, tentative. So with that, staff recommends that council adopt a resolution authorizing the city to make $566,600 in deferred payments to Wilmer Municipal Utilities between 2022 and 2023 to reimburse their purchase of downtown streetlights.
Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the joint project for funding for the downtown streetlight replacement. Discussion. Councilmember Plowman, followed by Nelson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I remember discussing this years back at Public Works, and I guess I'm supportive of the measure because it kind of fits into our long-term plan, but then also at, at the time we discussed the materials that these were being constructed out of as being, you know, much better, longer, longer-lasting, more robust systems, also the modularity of the systems, being able to contain all the different fixtures and the different items, and they're, they can do a multitude of things, as well as energy efficiency. And the long-term energy efficiencies also play a big part, and when we're talking hundreds of light fixtures that will be on, you know, thousands and tens of thousands of collective hours, I think the overall project and the net result will be a good one for the downtown, so I, I support the measure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Nelson, followed by Davis.
Thank you. I'm supportive also, but I, I was asked about the question that the new ones that are up, the, the test ones that are on Fourth Street?
Yes.
Appear to be brighter, and the question was about light pollution, if we're going to be able to control that there isn't more light than there should be.
Mm-hmm.
Just, so I was asked that question, I'm asking that one. My personal question was, I know we talked about having the ability to, is there a way for it to have, be able to do music or anything else besides putting up flags?
Sure.
Or banners?
Sure. So in regards to your first question about light pollution, I believe that this was done in, done sort of based on the findings of a lighting study we done had, we, we had done, and that, that's something we have in mind, and that's something we're keeping an eye on, and I don't, I don't think staff perceives that being an issue. To your second question, I don't, I don't believe that there are, I don't know that speakers are an option on this model, but I'm sure I could speak with utilities who are more sort of in touch with the technical aspects of this model, see if that's something we could pursue.
Okay. So I know the question was asked that there would be electricity to them. Is there or not, do you know?
Like, like an outlet?
Yeah.
I believe so, yes.
Okay. All right. Just trying to keep up with Spicer.
If you want something like Spicer has, you have to run CAT V or CAT VI to that system in order to run those, so that takes, that's different.
It's not something where.
Because that's an internet-based system. And so you, and then that's how you put speakers on them and you run it, internet to the light poles that you want to run the speakers to. So that's different. And without having conduit in place while you're doing this, in open cut areas, this wouldn't be possible at this time, because this is going to just be replacing the streetlights that are right there, and electricity is already there, so that's why, that's probably not possible. Also, note on the, the, the difference in appearance between your lights. You have to remember, these are LED lights that are up there, and they're brand new. The systems that you have are, correct me if I'm wrong, John, are they mercury vapors? Are they, they're mercury vapors? And as, each year, as that light continues, it also diminishes in foot candles, which is how would they measure lighting on the, on the bases, on, on surfaces. So that's why they don't look very bright, and that's why the LED lights look really bright, because they're brand new. And so, yeah, it's going to be a change, but it'll be a good change, because you'll have more foot candles, your, your sidewalks will be lit, and it's going to be very nice. I don't think it'll be overly bright, though.
Councilmember Davis.
Well, I was going to remind everyone that there's light samples, but Audrey already brought it up. But I remember in a Main Street Board meeting, when we picked out the lights, I believe one of the things with the light was that instead of it shining all around, it kind of shines more down on the sidewalk. So that's a, you know, why they're bright, too. And it will feel safer, I think, with all the light.
Additional comments or questions? Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded to consider the approval of a two-year funding process shared with the Municipal Utilities for funding of downtown streetlight replacement. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Pardon me?
Aye.
Aye. Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That motion, that the resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of contracting for a workplace wellness program. Our HR director.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. So we are considering an employee wellness program for 2022, which is something that we feel is a great way to assist all of our employees with a, a better mindset, and maybe lots of different options for topics. So we want to contract with Amber Silva to provide these services for us, and she's going to survey staff just to see what they might be most interested in. But it could be things like physical wellness, it could be financial wellness, nutritional wellness, mental health wellness, all different types of topics where we would be able to just every other month, maybe provide some type of support for our staff, for them to participate in activities, maybe go to webinar sessions and things like that. The cost, you can see that we've estimated for Ms. Silva's time is about $55 an hour, and we estimated about 100 hours throughout the course of one year for her, and then the rest of that would be for items, for who we're going to provide presentations and things like that with different speakers and things. So I would just ask for your approval to enter into a contract with Ms. Silva to facilitate an employee wellness program for the city employees for 2022.
Council, what are your wishes?
Motion to adopt a resolution approving entering into a contract with Amber Silva to facilitate an employee wellness program for the city. Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
And the resolution passes. Next is to set a special assessment hearing for unpaid fire department false alarm charges. Our city clerk.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you tonight is a request to set a public hearing for 6:01 PM on November 15th for the special assessment hearing for unpaid false alarm charges against property at 1112 Lake Avenue Northwest.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Bakerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Ask?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
That resolution, that motion passes as well. Let's take a five-minute recess. Councilmember Butterfield is on his way, and he should be here within that five-minute period of time, so let's take a five-minute recess, and then we can continue the public hearing and see what council wishes to do on those. We are in recess. We are in recess. Okay, the Wilmer City Council for Monday, November 1st will go back in session. We are going to, I'm looking for a motion to pull off the, no, I just recessed it. So I don't need to do that, do I?
Where did you go to bring back the?
Yeah, I was thinking about this, Mayor, Council. Given the vote took place in this meeting, a simple motion to reconsider the previous motion should be sufficient. So I'd recommend a motion to reconsider the motion to continue the hearing.
Motion to reconsider the hearing. Second.
Motion made in second to reconsider the public hearing amending the charter of the Wilmer, of the city of Wilmer, amending section 2.12. So we have had a brief discussion in regards to this. It was presented to us last, at our last meeting three weeks ago, and presented again at this meeting. So at this point, I'll bring it to the council table for council discussion. Counsel, what are your wishes? So you could adopt a motion to assign the change a number and, or you could not make any motions at all and die for a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the changes.
So a motion has been made to adopt a motion amending section 2.12 of the city charter. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been, motion has been made and seconded. Discussion. Counsel member Nelson.
Thank you. I was asked about this today, so I'm just asking for clarification. Please explain, as I learned it, a resolution authorizes expenditures versus a motion to accept. But I know, I believe I understand what we're doing, so why do we not need a resolution any longer?
Mr. Scott, our city attorney.
Mayor, members of the council, this charter amendment, in my view, would not change the council's practice to require resolutions in and of itself. This charter amendment simply acknowledges what I think everyone understands to be true and what even other charter sections contemplate to be true, which is that there are certain things the council can just do by motion. If it doesn't fall into one of your requirements, like approving a contract or approving an expenditure, this direction the city wants to give, for example, the direction given earlier this meeting on the auditorium issue would be a classic example where the city could act by motion and has been acting by motion. This charter amendment would simply remove any confusion about whether that's a valid action for the city council to take. Don't think it will change anything except it eliminates any interpretation that that's somehow not something the council should be doing.
Okay, so like the practice with the consent items, if there's expenditures, they'll still, we'll still do a resolution?
Under current practices, yes. Of course, the city council could change that. That is something that's not a charter requirement, but, but this charter amendment by passing it would not change that practice.
Okay, thank you very much.
Just some comments or questions. Counsel member Butterfield.
Is this one going to get rid of all the committees?
No, this is the one that deals with motions and resolutions. So, and neither of them will get rid of all committees. Neither of them will do that. So the first one on the table again is on the issue in regards to resolutions and motions. So is there additional discussion? Again, for a charter amendment, it takes a unanimous vote of the council, so all vote, all eight members have to vote for it. If all eight members do not vote for it, the charter commission has the authority and the right to bring it to the vote of the people if the, if the council does not vote. With that, I see no further questions. Roll call.
Counsel member Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Bakerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That ordinance amending section 1.2 of the city charter has been approved, and it will be assigned the number, and it will be published. The next one is the one that removes the confusion around the finance committee piece in the charter. So with that, I would entertain a motion from council to reconsider this item.
So move motion to reconsider this item. Second.
Motion made in second. Okay, with that, can someone give us just a brief overview of it to bring counsel member Butterfield back up to speed? Mr. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This charter amendment would eliminate a reference to the finance committee that I guess I would characterize as sort of crept into the charter over the years. The city council committees were not established by charter. The city council committees were established by the city council on its own initiative, which the council has the ability to do, just like the council has the ability to decide not to have committees anymore. That's something completely up to the city council, how to organize itself and conduct its business efficiently. Over the years, obviously, the council had committees for a long time, and apparently at some point, charter section 5.02 was amended, and a reference to the council committee was included in that language. It was obviously brought to attention after the council recently went away from its committee structure because it was kind of out of date in the provision. My analysis to the charter commission was it really probably shouldn't have been in the charter to begin with because the committees were not charter-created bodies.
Okay, so the charter commission is asking us to amend that section, section 5.02 of the city charter. We have a motion that's been made, and it's been seconded. Discussion from the council. Counsel member, I'm sorry, there's not a motion. Counsel, what are your wishes?
I move to accept the charter commission's recommendations to adopt an ordinance amending charter section 5.02, assign it a number, and publish. Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion. Counsel member Bakerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Charter member Engen, how did this come to you guys, to your committee? What brought it on?
I thought it came from the council. And we had a discussion of these, these issues, and it was our feeling that the council should make, have the right to make a decision of how they feel they can organize to make decisions the best, better than, this didn't need to be in the council or in the charter. And it is, it came from one of our meetings, you're right. And it was, it was brought up by one of the members that the, when the council changed your structure and eliminated the committees, went to your current system, you were out of commission, out of coordination with, with the charter. And so then this, this came in, and then this would, this would bring it so you're into conformance with the charter with, as you operate now. And there was a discussion on it, and it was deemed that this is, this is appropriate to let the council decide how you can organize the best and how you can structure. That should be your prerogative. It wouldn't be something like the utility commission, the hospital commission, and the planning commission are commissions, and they probably, there's probably other reasons why that should be in a commission basis in a charter. But this should be how you operate and your rules, not the charter.
Well, I'm sure most people know, we don't even know how to operate yet. Some still want committee meetings.
Yep.
Some don't. There's discussion, we might go back to them. I, I don't know what's going to happen in 14 months, 13 or 14 months, but I would just as soon leave it in there because the finance is probably the most important committee that we have, and right now, the whole council is the finance committee.
We did have a good discussion on that, and, you know, I guess it's, and I think it was my feeling, my personal feeling is that the committee is a better way to do it because you can work it out with a fewer number of people, you can come to a decision better. But, but I think that's a decision, I think the consensus of the charter commission, that would be consensus of what, as a body, you feel to how it's best to work. And I think that's a very important issue for the council.
And there was years we didn't have a park and rec board, even though it was mentioned in the charter. And for years, we never had a charter commission. Everyone's terms expired, and we had to reorganize and get new members. So we were without for 12, 14 years.
I think the charter has been in effect a long, number of decades.
But you weren't active.
There may, was not an active charter commission, but the charter would have been what was before, and there were some operating things that were not in conformance.
Yep.
I think the question would be, is it necessary that the charter would dictate how you organize? It doesn't eliminate the importance of the council coming together of how you should, how you can make decisions, what the best way for you to make decisions.
Yeah, it says in here, we can have whatever committees we want, but I think the previous leaders thought finance was probably the most important committee.
I believe, I don't know the history there, but I'm thinking about it, I think that's true. I thought that was work, but you could also look at public works, you know, it's a, it's an enormous one. Each one of those are, are big issues. I think where the, it's mentioned in the charter commission, charter, it deals with approving the budget. The budget goes, it goes through a process. And it's sort of floating independently, and there's a lot of other important things that are not in the charter. And so I think, as Mr. Scott mentioned, this would keep it more equal with, with these other items. It's not that they're not important, but it's hard to say that finance is more important than public works.
If you don't have the finances, you can't fund the public works, so.
That's where you spend your money. Yeah, that's right. It's, but it's, there's a, the council has got an obligation to make many decisions. And is it better to have a rigid document? You know, I think if you go back on the Constitution of the United States, one of the beautiful things about it, it isn't black and white and tell you how to make all decisions, but it leaves the door open so you can rethink things as time goes on. And I think that's what a charter has to do. And I think the question is, is it better to have rigid rules that are dictated, and then the elected council members have to just fall in place? Or is it better to form a consensus of the people that are working, that are elected to represent the city, to make those operating rules? I think that's, that'd be the decision for you, and the charter commission thought that the elected officials should have the freedom to organize it where they want. Granted, maybe you change that once in a while. I don't think it's set in concrete that you have to set one way and not change for the next 50 years.
Counsel member Nelson, followed by Plowman.
Thank you. I'm, was actually very confused by the document that we were given. What my understanding of it was, is that this only relates to the budgeting section of the charter, but it's talking about disbanding committees and et cetera. And so I, I'm not sure where this came from because it didn't come from the direction of the council, but if we're looking at 5.2, it's only relating to the budget where it's referencing the finance committee. And so I'm going to go back to ask our city attorney, or I would request that, ask the city attorney regarding this because I think, I have mixed feelings about not having committees also. But what I was understanding was that this was something that was put only in the section of the budget area, and that it was someone's wish to make sure that the finance committee was not in that process.
Let Mr. Scott answer that. There was, it came from one of the, one of the charter commission members.
Okay.
Mayor, members of the council, the section within which the reference to the finance committee exists currently is section 5.02 that deals with the process for submitting the, the budget, and that it goes to the finance committee first, I believe. I think the context is almost irrelevant to the question with this ordinance because this is just simply a matter of having the charter kind of make sense. And I guess, the way I'm thinking about it is it makes sense for the charter to have provisions about what the planning commission does because the charter establishes that there will be a planning commission. It makes sense for the charter to have the same about the utilities commission because the charter has provided in the charter, there will be a utilities commission. In this case, the finance committee, like the other committees, were creations of the city council because the charter said the city council will have the authority to create boards and commissions. It also means the city council has the authority to go away from any boards and commissions it has created. So having a reference to a council-created committee right in the charter, just to my mind, just organizationally didn't really make sense. Having said that, I mean, I don't want to lead you to think the stakes are incredibly high here. If this provision weren't amended and future budgets were prepared, I would concur that they would just need to go to the city council since there is no finance committee. But as far as just a matter of, I consider this kind of cleaning up language in the charter to be consistent with the way the city is already structured and with where the charter has kind of delegated out different responsibilities.
So what we're doing is removing just the finance committee and saying it's the responsibility of the full charter, or full council to do this, correct?
That's, that's correct. And this charter amendment, again, isn't saying there can't be committees, it's just acknowledging that whether there are committees or not is a decision for the council at any given time. And if the council wanted to say, you know, for its own practices, that the council wants the budget to go to the finance committee first, it could certainly set up a process to do that. It would be back in the hands of the council with this.
Counsel member Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to, I'm going to dumb it down for myself and then for everybody else just a little bit more. So this isn't a standalone portion of the charter that says there will be a finance committee. This is just language in there when it's talking about the budget. It happens to say, go to the finance committee, da, 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 da. But because there is no finance committee, we do that work anyway. So this isn't like wiping out some charter provision establishing a formal finance committee, correct?
That's exactly correct, yes.
Okay, and then my second part question, and I think you already answered it before, but just to clarify, because we, we have not used a separately delegated finance committee for the budget so far, the budget planning process, does that create any problems or no?
Not to my mind. I think when there's a reference like this in the charter to a body that it hasn't established and that doesn't exist, it would just default to the full council until the councils decided to send it somewhere else.
Okay. Well, and if I, I can, I think that in my own interpretation and opinion and reading over it earlier today, I believe this is just a tech, just a technicality for our charter, making it more clean, more understandable.
I believe the finance committee just recommends to the council, the council has to approve the budget. Just some comments or questions? Again, this is a 8-0 required vote. If it does not pass, the charter commission has the right to take this to the voters. And so just in case anybody's wondering if the mayor brought this forward, I, this did not come from the mayor. I mean, there was. It was from a council.
Mr. Mayor, the original request came from former city administrator Brian Grammets. He referred it to me, to myself and city attorney, attorney Scott, as I am part of the charter commission.
Hey, and he never talked to me about that, doing that. So I never, I never knew it was coming up until I saw it on the agenda the first I saw it. So I don't know if he talked to the council members or not, I don't know. So, so again, this is an 8-0 vote. If it doesn't pass, the charter commission has the right to put it on the ballot. Roll call.
Counsel member Nelson.
Aye.
Bakerly.
No.
Osmus.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Nope.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Five ayes.
You got to call him Butterfield.
Oh, Butterfield, I'm sorry.
No.
Five ayes, three.
The motion fails, so please take that back to the charter commission that, that first one passed, the second one did not.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, are there council members that have any pride in all this? In hearing, none there, we will go into a closed session. The agenda for the closed session is pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05 sub 3C to determine the asking price or consider offers or counter offers for sale of real property. This agenda item is to determine the asking price or consider offers or counter offers for the sale of property within this, within city-owned real property, parcel number 95-911-0780. This portion of the legal basis to close the meeting is this portion of the properly noticed regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to noticed regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota State Statute Section 13D .05 Sub Division 3C. We may have a couple of routine council action items after the meeting, after the closed session, and we may reopen the meeting. And that will be not discussed during closed session, but which are related to the matter, we will be discussing. I will now entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So move. Second.
Motion made in second is to close the meeting. We will now go into closed session.